Go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, and we will start with the roll call.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Boujack.
President.
Diaz.
President.
Pakla.
Here.
Woodin.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
LaGrand.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Sparks.
President.
Teal.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Honstein.
Here.
Hildenbrand.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
Antor. Green.
Here.
Chair Stuck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I will now call in Commissioner DeBoer for our invocation this morning.
Do I stand for invocation? I don't know. How do I turn this on? Do I turn it on? Is it on?
I turned you on.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Commissioner DeBoer. As you all know, I'm from the 4th District, Cannon Township, Cortland Township, City of Rockford, a portion of Nelson Township. But first and foremost, I am a sinner saved by the redeeming grace of Jesus Christ, and I have committed my life in service to Him. And I wanted to share a little bit from John 14, but I was thinking to myself personally, I was just thinking, this is a confusing time in our culture and in our world, and there's been a heavy weight, a spiritual weight, I would say, in our world the last couple of years, and wouldn't it be really nice if we knew the right paths forward? Wouldn't it be really nice if we knew what was actually true and what was right? You know, so many times we're so confused by what we hear. There's so many different political sides telling us one thing or the other thing. It's really hard to tell sometimes. Wouldn't it be really nice if we had a culture of life and not a culture of death? And wouldn't it be nice if we were to value life in the womb and also value each other? Value the differences that we have, speaking highly of each other regardless of party lines, lifting people up instead of tearing people down? In John 14:6, Jesus says, "I am the way; I am the truth, and I am life." And Kent County public commissioners, we need Jesus. We need Jesus. And so I thought about coming up here and speaking about some of my favorites like Hayek and Bastiat, and I wanted to talk about liberty. We need liberty. No, even more than that, we need Jesus. And He is the reason that I am here today because I'm just a poor kid from Kentwood. There's no reason I should be up here speaking to you all. I have lived my life and I earnestly tried to follow Him, and sometimes I feel like that's just holding on to a roller coaster ride, but that's okay. And interesting enough, in the verse before John 14:6, it says, Thomas is saying, "Hey, show me the way so I know where to go." And Jesus says, "Just follow Me. Just follow Me. I have no idea where our world is going. I have no idea where I'm going. I have no idea where Kent County is going. Just follow in the footsteps of Jesus." Okay, I just wanted to pray, and then I'll be done on my sermon, okay? Heavenly Father, thank you for the provision that you have given to us. God, you are Lord. Jesus Christ is Lord, and we come before you. We ask for humble hearts and wise minds for the commissioners for this board. Lord, we also ask that you would give us a heart of repentance. Lord, that we would come to know Jesus and that because of that we would repent from sin, that we would follow you with our whole hearts and our minds and our souls, God. Thank you for the redeeming work of Jesus Christ. Thank you that you love us regardless of who or what or anything that we've done, Lord. You love us, and it's in the name of Jesus we can pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll now move to our special order business, starting with presentation from Housing Next, and we have Brooke Osterman with us this morning. Good morning, Brooke.
Move that down a little. Good morning. Thank you for having me, Commission. I'm so thankful to be here. As mentioned, I'm Brooke Osterman. I'm the Director of Policy and Communications for Housing Next. We're a partnership, a regional partnership, moving housing supply solutions forward. So we're thankful to be here alongside our partners at Housing Kent that you'll hear from in just a moment. So we are focused on supply. We recognize it as a critical part of the housing solutions here in our county and in our region, but we're excited to have partners who are also doing incredible work and critical work. So Housing Next and Housing Kent, two different things. I think that's partially why we're here. But we, again, are a regional partnership focused on housing solutions. And what I'm here to share with you today, we do our advocacy work, our kind of work to move housing forward based on what we see in our housing supply data. So we have an update to share with you from the Housing Needs Assessment for Kent County. The previous one was done in 2020, but recognizing market conditions and shifts that we saw in neighboring Ottawa County because of the pandemic and changes, we decided to do an update to that here at the end of 2022. So I'll be sharing with you the updated housing needs for Kent County as well as some solutions that this commission has been a part of that we can do locally to continue to advance the work and accelerate the work to make sure that all of our neighbors have housing here in Kent County. So first off, I want to share why everyone in this room likely cares about housing. You likely care about it for one of the reasons on the screen or hundreds of other reasons, right? So we know that housing impacts everything in a community that we desire most. It impacts economic development. It impacts our ability to retain bright talent. It impacts our ability to have generational wealth building opportunities for those traditionally marginalized. It's a really big deal for stability in our community and to make sure that we're seeing those individuals thrive here. So I mentioned the Housing Needs Assessment. This was just updated and completed at the end of 2022, so this is incredibly fresh data that I'll be sharing with you today. But one thing that we want to highlight is the overall, we're going to dive into what the demand looks like, but the number that I want you to walk away with today, it's a really big number. It's an increase from what we saw in 2020, but it is something that together we can work towards a solution on. That number is nearly 35,000 units in Kent County. Nearly 35,000 households over the next, the projection over the next five years are going to be looking for housing in Kent County. So what we know is that is an increase from our 2020 numbers, 59% increase in the city of Grand Rapids and a 54% increase in the rest of the county. What was a 22,000-unit shortage just two years ago is nearly 35,000 units and climbing, to give you some perspective on that change. So this graph will show you that change from 2020 through 2027 across the rental and for sale housing spectrum. It does break it down by AMI. You'll see a lot of that today. That means area median income. You'll see what wages and salaries are associated with that, but 120% AMI or above is traditionally higher income or market rate, and then below that is where we're talking about attainable and affordable housing solutions. So the breakdown here then by AMI, this shows that we do have and continue to see higher income earners looking for housing in the community, but our biggest rental gap is actually in workforce development housing or that space between market rate and what is traditionally subsidized. We also see that same threshold. There is over half of all for sale. Demand falls within that threshold. So those are two, you know, critical pieces for us to understand that there is demand across every income space in our county and greatly, but that we do see large gaps in what the market is having trouble producing and what is not traditionally subsidized. So this is a breakdown of that graphically, so I mentioned market rate, attainable housing, and affordable housing. This graph shows that we have a very large need for that attainable housing. So again, between that 60 and 120% AMI, you'll see that secondary to that, we have market rate housing, higher income earners, and then we also have at 6,400 affordable housing. So those are folks who are looking for housing under 60% AMI and don't have a lot of housing solutions when they're priced out of the market. The important thing to recognize here is that while we see large gaps in our higher income and middle income, those 6,400 households, that number is households, right? Those are folks who are challenging and are having a challenging time economically and often are highly cost burdened. So something that I want to highlight, we'll get into kind of what the data is showing us as to why we saw this great increase in need. But what I want to highlight quickly before moving to that is in Kent County over the last two years, I mentioned the pandemic, I mentioned changes in the market, interest rates increasing. In Kent County, we continue to build, and so we are in a better position than we would have been had we seen those things change. So our municipality leaders, our developers, folks who are looking for solutions over the last two years have really continued to move the needle, and we're really thankful for that as we see across single family and multifamily both. That being said, these numbers added up equal about 5,000 permits over the last two years. When you have a 35,000-unit shortage, that means we have to work together to find innovative solutions to bring more units online now. So I mentioned the data is showing us a couple of things. The data is showing us that a lot of this change and increase in demand is coming from population growth. So in West Michigan, in Kent County specifically, we continue to outpace the state. We have been doing so since 2010. But as you'll see for the projections for the next five years, the state of Michigan is expected to see decline, and we continue to grow. That mirrored with household growth. We're seeing new households forming, and that growth is continuing again while the state of Michigan is remaining quite stagnant. And so that, along with underproduction that we've had for the last decade or so, is leading to a really critical challenge here in Kent County. So you all, I believe, have received some of the data, but I just want to cover really high level what we saw. So in the city of Grand Rapids, that new gap is over 14,000 units, and in the rest of the county, over 20,000 units. Just for your knowledge, in all of Kent County, that breaks down to about three times the need for for sale, so it's about 15,000 units for sale, 5,000 units rental. In the city of Grand Rapids, it's about, it's much closer. It's more 50/50 between the needs. We know that there is nearly zero affordable vacancy options for rental in Kent County. We know that one of the highlights that came out was there was a reduction in overall percentage of the population that was cost burdened. So that's a good thing. We saw, I mentioned, the greatest growth in rental gaps coming from households earning $50,000 or more and then rapid growth in households earning over $100,000. We did see rents increase rapidly, specifically among market rate rental, and then we saw housing stock below $200,000 diminish drastically, which is probably not a surprise to anyone here. Two other things that I want to highlight from the assessment is that we know that prices have increased by 99% in Kent County since 2016, but what I want to highlight from our Housing Needs Assessment is that the two largest increases came over the last two years since the previous assessment. So that was in 2021 for the city of Grand Rapids at 18.4%, and then Kent County in 2022 at 15.7%. So I also want to highlight here that we have some other things happening when we see these numbers, right? We know that households of color disproportionately are kept out of homeownership opportunities, and we also know that renters are more cost burdened than homeowners. And so this is a breakdown of folks who pay 30% or more of their income towards housing or, in the case of 50% or more, are actually severely cost burdened. So that means that they're not getting access to healthcare and having challenges economically outside of that. So the good news, the other reason that I'm here, is to share that we are already doing great work locally to combat a national issue. So we know that we continue to grow, that our population continues to grow, and this commission just last year approved $17.5 million of ARPA allocations for gap financing as a tool to bring more units online across that income spectrum. It has $58.3 million worth of impact through that fund, that initial investment, by leveraging private dollars to really make an impact on housing here in Kent County. We also saw this commission make an investment in grant support for municipalities around the county to update their zoning, to allow for more housing diversity in every community. The city of Grand Rapids has done great work with allocations as well. And then I want to highlight that many of the municipalities you represent have already been working on zoning changes to be a part of the solution here locally to allow for more diversity of housing that is more affordable and accessible here in Kent County. So we saw that the need is there, the demand is there. We also saw that the will is there. We have an incredible collaborative effort here in the community to move housing supply solutions forward, housing solutions forward. And so we have a coalition called Yes West Michigan of a few thousand folks who are out in the community supporting projects in the pipeline, master plans, zoning updates. We're doing a tour of this data across the county, so we'll be at municipalities presenting, neighborhood associations, the Equitable Housing Initiative, so the grant funding for municipalities is a solution that we will be driving and providing technical assistance for. And then I also wanted to highlight that at a state level, we do have a lot of tools and advocacy work happening that will come alongside what we're doing here locally to really move the needle on housing solutions. So what I want to leave you on is that this is publicly available. Our Housing Needs Assessment is at housingnext.org. Anyone can access it. It is 172 pages long, so I am as a resource to each of you, to the community. I know we have a short time today, but I am here to answer any questions that you may have. There's lots of great data on vacancy rate and all of those things in the assessment. But I also want to highlight where we're going as a community. So we know that we have great tools. We know that through gap financing, diverse housing options, through zoning reform and community will building, that we just, we know what to do and we need to accelerate that work. We know that. But what does that mean, right? When we have a 35,000-unit shortage, what does that mean? It can feel really overwhelming, like we don't have any chance of meeting that number. And so what I want to share with you is that we would have to triple production in order to meet that number. Know that we are committed to getting as close to that as possible. You saw 5,000 units permitted over the last two years, but we need your help. We need the community's help, and every municipality, we need all of the community to buy into the fact that they want more housing options for them, for their neighbors, for their families, for their kids. And we hope that we will be able to utilize the tools here locally alongside those efforts to at least double production, but know that we are pushing every lever we can with your support to really meet that need of 35,000 units over the next five years. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Brooke. I suspect there may be a few questions, but I think we did distribute this out to the commissioners before this morning, so that probably answered all their questions.
Great.
Or generated twice as many. We'll see.
Well, and I'll share too that, you know, I'll be staying after the Housing Kent presentation, so I'm happy to answer on the data now, but if there are questions generally on housing, we can take those together.
Thanks. So questions that require dialogue may be best handled outside. So anyway, yes, Mr. Boujack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are we focusing on urban renewal in this plan where we're going to take houses that are blighted, where we have infrastructure, water, and sewer, rather than expanding out into the suburbs where we would have to take land and add water and sewer? Is this a part of the focus?
That's a great question, yes. So with Housing Next in our support, we are focused countywide in looking at how every community can be part of the housing solution. So when we're in more rural areas, we're actually looking at how they can incrementally change and add density to their community where that infrastructure already exists versus building large-scale developments outside of that. So that's a part of the plan as well as what you mentioned. So we're looking, a part of our work with the Equitable Housing Initiative will actually be a zoning map that we're partnering with U of M on to have Kent County focused on where all of that infrastructure developmental, developed land that is able to be developed is and mapping all of that together to make sure that we're making those best decisions as a community.
Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Brooke. Thanks for the presentation. I have this quote that I'd like to share, and I have two quick questions if I may. This is a quote that was said by President Roosevelt at his second inaugural address. He said, "I see one-third of a nation ill-housed, ill-clad, ill-nourished. The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much, it is whether we provide enough for those who have too little." So with that being said, I have two quick questions. As was mentioned here, the county made some investments last year when it comes to housing. Do we have an idea where those investments put us as far as these 35,000 units that are needed by 2027? Do we know how much that moved the needle? Because these were dollar amounts that were shown here, but do we know how that affected those units specifically?
That's a great question. So I would say, two ways to answer your question. We know that the gap financing tool that was supported through the county will have income restrictions on it, so it will focus on workforce development, housing, and affordable housing. So we're really thankful for that parameter. It's a critical part of that gap financing tool. And then as an estimate, I can share that we hope that it would be able to combat about 10% of that overall need.
Of the overall need?
Yes.
Okay. And my second question is, what things can this board do? What kinds of things can we implement to get this need met by 2027 and even earlier if we could? This, as you mentioned, is a project, a need that's not going to be met by just this board, but what types of things can we do? I'm forgetting his name, but one of the presenters that was here yesterday at the Finance Committee, when I was speaking with him personally, suggested that local municipalities could do things like implementing bonds that would direct some of those funds to affordable housing. So that's one of the ideas that he suggested, but what things can we specifically do to meet this need?
I appreciate that question. So a couple of things that, I mentioned the gap financing tool. That's a big deal because it also is not just that amount of dollars. That's a tool that the commission set up to be a resource and tool that can continue to have investment. So that's one piece, is making sure that folks know that they can support that fund in the community and bring additional dollars online for housing right now that's in the pipeline, because we have a lot of housing that is just trying to get to the finish line, and because of increased interest rates and things are not able to, and so they need gap financing. The other thing that I would say is you all represent your individual communities. And so as we develop our zoning map tool and as we are working with our municipality partners, we would love you to engage in those conversations and to support. We really need to see zoning that reflects what we're trying to do. We need to see that as a component of the work. We need to see more diversity of housing allowed to be built in our community and in many communities that each of you represent that is very difficult to do or isn't happening at all. And so I would love to be a resource and to be able to call you, each of you individually, into action when we're in those municipalities to really hold accountable our partners and in our communities in being a part of the solution.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And last point, I personally spend a lot of time reaching out to our state electives and our federal electives. And as we have mentioned, this is a crisis. So if you, you've already mentioned some things that we could do, but if you could send some pointers my way as far as what things I can advocate for, for our state and federal partners, that would be great.
I will do that, and I will just briefly mention that the Housing Michigan Coalition that we're a part of and that was started here in Kent County had four pieces of legislation successfully passed last year that are being implemented right now that complement the work being done here locally. And there is already work as soon as next week for another bill that will support. So I will share those with you as well as this commission because that's a critical part, is mirroring those federal, state, and local solutions.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. So Commissioner Diaz actually took my question, so I do have one brief comment, if only because I do think it's important when we look at the context of it. You mentioned we need to build 35,000 homes. We need to ramp up production three times, and that sounds astronomical, and it is. But also creates a sense of, is this even doable? And I just, pulling from the Census Bureau, Census Bureau, our recent kind of total number of housing units currently in Kent County, 35,000 represents a 13% increase. And just to put it into context, this DAIS increased 13% when we added two new commissioners, and I barely knew that that increase happened through the renovation. And I think that that just illustrates that we can increase our supply in a way that does not dramatically alter our own communities and our neighborhoods, but just ensures that they can be communities where our growing county can live. And would just urge all of us in our discussions, because we will have constituents reaching out to us concerned about change, and change is disconcerting, I get it, but there is a way that we can expand our housing supply in a way that does not drastically change our lives and just ensures more in this county can share in our lives. So I had a question with it, but Diaz took it, so there's my comment.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just wondered, I mean, I was really excited that we could do the Homes Fund with the ARPA money. Have you been hearing interest from developers like, oh, this is going to make a difference?
Yes. So we had had input from developers before that tool saying, if only, right? And now they have that, but I have projects for both the Equitable Housing Initiative. So I have municipalities who don't have the resources but want to update their zoning and want to be a part of the housing solution, and we have developers who have projects that said, if this was online right now, we would use it. So we have projects in the pipeline that as soon as those tools are up and running, we can make sure that they're working for the community.
Fantastic. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Now we have one more. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hennessy.
Following up on Commissioner Wooden's perspective here, it's a little bit different here. But you, in the very end of your, you talked about the possibility for zoning reform, and you talked, you know, certainly about growing quickly. So it brings in to question, I will look at the change of this board as being significant, but it does bring into question, how do you grow smartly in terms of the use of the land and the other resources, whether they be roads, schools, whatever?
That's a great question. So I would say a couple of ways to answer that question is that we work really closely with our community partners across sectors. So when there is land available in a municipality, we work with those leaders. We work with those constituents to not always be a housing solution. It may not make sense based on infrastructure or other things. It might make sense for something else. But what I would say is that we're committed to looking at each community differently, but as a part of the whole solution. And so we recognize that not every community has land available to build certain types of buildings, but we know that every community has the ability to add to their supply, and we can do that through incremental density. We can do that through accessory dwelling units. We can do that through townhomes and condos, which a lot of people would be really excited to have access to here in the community. So a lot of the change isn't really huge changes, but we're committed to looking at what that looks like in each community, and we have zoning reform examples of what that can look like based on what the community's desire is for growth and what their limitations are.
Follow up. Go ahead.
I have a follow-up. Just with all the townships, villages, cities that we have, are you really equipped to work with, you know? We, as a Kent County body, we're limited on what we can do for zoning. But are you prepared to really work at that kind of a level? Are you capable of that?
We are, we are. So we, Housing Next was founded about five years ago in Ottawa County and expanded into the two-county region last year. And so our team has been doing that work for the last five years in Ottawa County, and we continue to do so, but have done that work over the last year in Kent County, having conversations and outreach with every municipality partner. And in fact, as a part of the Equitable Housing Initiative, we will be required and will be focused on reaching out to every municipality to let them know what resources are available. So you're welcome.
All right. Any other questions or comments? No, I think I've got them all. So again, thank you, Brooke. I'm not sure that all of us realize this, but as a county, we've been around for about 250 years, and I think this is the first time, to my knowledge, that the county has stepped into this space to begin to try to assist in addressing the housing crisis. So we're looking forward to being able to have an impact, and I thank you because I think you are sitting on our Housing Committee in order to help us assist in identifying the parameters for that work. So thank you for your work.
Thank you all.
All right. Our next special order is presentation from Housing Kent, and we have with us Eureka People. Good morning.
Oh, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present before the Kent County Commissioners today. My name is Eureka People, and I have the unique privilege of being the president of president of Housing Kent, which is a startup nonprofit in Kent County. We've been around for about a year now, celebrated our one-year anniversary on February 1. And we are what you call a system-building nonprofit, uniquely designed to ensure that all residents in Kent County have safe, quality, affordable housing in the neighborhoods of their choosing. Before you today, you have the full presentation deck. I am not going to go through all of it in detail, but I did want you to have it before you so that you can peruse it at your leisure. I'll just highlight some of the key points and then dive down where I think is appropriate for our conversation today. The one thing that I do want to share is our shared vision with the Housing Stability Alliance, which is a public-private sector partnership of about 130 organizations and growing, is that everyone, again, is stably housed or housed by choice, which again is that everyone can choose where they live and live safe and quality and in affordable housing. Three big goals that we have, a community has adopted, have been to increase affordable housing, to dissolve homelessness, and to eliminate racial disparities in the housing system. All those are data-driven points that came from about a three-to-five-year extensive community planning process that was led by K-Connect and the Housing Stability Alliance. One of the unique things that came out of that community planning process, in addition to Housing Kent, is this path to housing stability. The path to housing stability captures all of the unique situations that families and individuals can experience, from no housing, which is literally, to eminently homeless, all the way to housed by choice. And what I want to bring your attention to on this is this speaks to the need for interdependency across organizations and entities, again, public, private and social, to work together to bring about a comprehensive set of solutions. Because each one of those steps along that path require a unique set of strategies to address a unique set of challenges. So even as Brooke came and presented to you about the supply issues, that's really just one bucket on this particular continuum. If we want to address housing instability in Kent County, we need supply to couple and to be coordinated with solutions and strategies across each one of those steps in the continuum. Go for it. We've been asked, at least by preparation, to talk about the difference between Housing Kent and Housing Next. Was talking about that just a little bit. One is that we're really strong partners, and we spend a lot of time behind the scenes working together, not only on messaging, but just in coordinating solutions. One of the ways that I'd like to talk about how we're different, and that means all of us are different, is by the questions that we are seeking to address. And so I'll talk about it comprehensively first. And that's, I'll start with the Continuum of Care, because I think many of you are familiar with that, and it's across the entire housing continuum. The Continuum of Care deals with that literally to eminently homeless piece, and essentially it's the homeless response. And so they seek to address the question is, how do we ensure that everyone in Kent County, in terms of homelessness, where it is rare, brief and non-occurring, in the middle of that continuum, the Essential Needs Task Force is addressing the question of how do we ensure that all people have access to the resources that they need to be able to meet their basic needs? So that might include transportation, workforce development, and a number of other items. Housing Next and the Permanent Housing Coordinating Council are really about the market rate and the robust housing supply. How do we make sure that we have the supply needs to meet the demand of our Kent County residents? Housing Kent is working across all of those domains in order to make sure that we have the system alignment and the coordination, that the whole system is working together to produce the desired outcomes, so that the system works together for all, so that everyone in Kent County can benefit from the housing system. And that, according to The Economist, a common term is that a rising tide lifts all boats. And so that as one family prospers in Kent County, we could assume that all families can prosper from housing. And when we're talking about the housing system, it's been our experience, after being on a listening tour and listening to literally hundreds of people, that would be housing experts, municipal leaders, funders, businesses, over the last 12 months. There are different mental models when we're talking about the housing system. And so when we're talking about the housing system, we are talking about this. We are talking about all the system actors, which are the people, the organizations and the institutions. We are also talking about all of the processes and the structures that bind them together in order to produce the outcomes. So it's how do those things fit together to produce change? That could include everything from the credit bureau and how credit decisions are made, to how mortgages are developed, all the way to how people get into emergency shelter, any process, any structure on how these actors work together to produce an outcome, and specifically the culture, which is the binding set of vital behaviors that are required to drive systems change. And what we're finding out, that the key system problem, which is pervasive typically in most communities, this is not new to Kent County, is that we do not necessarily have a lack of knowledge, we do not necessarily have a lack of solutions, we do not necessarily have a lack of organizations. What we lack most currently is a lack of collective shift in our thinking, and that's that most people are still operating in our silos. We make decisions in isolation. We make decisions according to what's best for our individual organizations or our individual objectives or our programs to be successful, and we are not thinking about how can the whole system benefit. We know that that is true from the outcomes that we are seeking, and those outcomes we try to deal with in terms of how things are aligning. We know that we're not achieving those outcomes because we know that at least 22,000 families, if not 30,000 families in Kent County are currently living unstably housed or not housed by choice. And one of the things that we're seeking to align everyone around is how can we get all families stably housed? We also know that Kent County ranks in the bottom 10 of equitable counties in terms of homeownership, especially relates to the black-to-white homeownership gap, but also from the Latinx and Hispanic ownership gap as well. And ideally, what we want to be able to do is get us into the top 10 in the next 20 years. We know that the system is also not producing outcomes because the homelessness rate is increasing. In fact, the latest point in time counts show that we have doubled that over the last couple, over the last year. And so we know that we need to get everyone to be able to have access to safe shelter, so that no one ever has to sleep in their car or in a place that is not habitable for human or is not fit for human habitation. We also know that the system is not working because at least 48% or 46% of renters and 20% of homeowners are living cost burden, which essentially means that they're not able to take care of all of their household expenses and basic needs. And so ideally, we want to rally the community to make sure that household income is able to keep pace with rent and mortgage payments. Again, this is something that is doable, and this represents about 60,000 families in Kent County. The other thing that we are keenly aware of, again, is those gross racial inequities, if not alarming and shocking. We want to make sure that all children in our county are treated equitably. We know at least from the black-white perspective, which is the widest gap, that 1 in 6 African-American children compared to 1 in 130 white children are entering the homeless system. And so what we want to do, at least in my last couple of minutes, to make sure that I keep time, is talk to you then about, then what is the path forward? Because we know that the system is not performing so that it benefits all. Then how then do we work on this alignment and coordination? And one of the ways that we work on the alignment and coordination, at least at Housing Kent, is through our strategic framework. This strategic framework maps four key performance indicators that we are working towards in this year. One is to be able to tell the story of housing in Kent County. Essentially, that is to make the invisible visible. When it comes to systems change work, a key principle is that you cannot solve what you cannot see. And right now, we are operating with a housing system, again, that is largely invisible to most of us, actually to all of us, and that it has not been documented in its entirety. And so we're working diligently to bring visualization to that so that we can more easily see the gaps, the overlap, and build a capability of strategic decision-making based on data that we can see. We're also working to optimize the homeless system. Coordinated entry essentially is that early part in the housing continuum where people enter the homeless system, and we want to be able to reduce the amount of time that individuals enter and the time that they exit the homeless system. The eviction prevention, eviction is the fulcrum point, if you will. It is the high-leverage strategy that can prevent people from entering into homelessness. And so we want to make sure that we address that. And the last thing, of course, is to develop and to grow the network in terms of the mindset. So it's really to expand the mindsets and to build the enthusiasm across Kent County so that everyone understands that to fix the housing system, to address this all and solve problems so that, so that we really can have an equitable county when it comes to housing, requires all of us working together in true partnership, and we each have a role as it relates to that. You'll see in your packet that there's some additional information. Just want to highlight real quickly in the last couple of minutes, that we have a gap analysis report that we're working towards. So all of this system mapping, system building work will bring us to Kent County Annual Gap Analysis Report. That'll include a number of different items, hopefully also your investment of the 17.5 million, where that dollars are going. Again, because when we can see more of the whole and have a comprehensive understanding of the system, we'll be able to make better investments, better decisions. System mapping is coming on board. We'll be able to identify which organizations are working on which strategies, how much funding is going to those strategies, how much funding in addition will be needed to be able to shore those up and scale them so that we could address problems at scale. Our shared measurement system, again, a strategic decision-making tool, will also be coming online. It's going to track key indicators across the housing system, again, to align everyone's work towards those so that we can see, again, if supply is working on this, homelessness is working on that, prevention is working in the middle, how do all of those levers need to be coordinated to get us to overall change. And then we'll roll everything up into a housing-wide dashboard so that anyone at any time, publicly accessible, can go to that space on our website and understand exactly how well we're doing and in which areas, and begin to draw some unique conclusions and understandings about how we can be successful and about changes that need to be made from their unique lenses in housing. And with that, I will say that we have a meeting tomorrow. For those of you who want to learn more about the mapping process or the shared measurement, it's from 9:00 to 10:00 at the Center of Community Transformation, and we welcome your participation there. That's all. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you very much, Eureka. I think you put a two-day seminar into 10 minutes.
Yes. It was a lot. I was actually 12. I was like, oh, no, I'm over.
All right. Any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the systems-level focus. I think that's really important to this problem in particular. I'm curious, just from my understanding, on the, on the demand side, like, I certainly know part, you know, one of the buckets that's increased demand is the pandemic hits, and suddenly someone that's working in an office building in Chicago or Detroit suddenly doesn't have to go to that office building anymore. And so they decide, Grand Rapids is a great place, and they come here. And so then, which is great. And so then, that's one of the buckets driving demand. I'm just curious, what are the other buckets driving demand in over the next couple of years? Do we think demand is going to kind of plateau and stabilize, or is it going to continue increasing, kind of exacerbating the problem?
Yeah, it depends on how you want to define demand and from which perspective. In the broadest sense, especially on the homelessness side, demand is driven by a few things. One is income. So across Kent County in general, as housing in price, as housing prices have increased and as rent prices have increased, household income has not kept to pace with those increases. So quite naturally, just on a sheer calculus level, families are being priced out of their homes, and that is increasing the demand, if you will, on why people are becoming more vulnerable to housing instability. And so a number of families, I think there are 60,000 households at least that are living paycheck to paycheck or are very vulnerable to any episode that could easily put them into homelessness. And the homelessness problem, again, that demand is, is we just know who's entering the system, the homeless system. What we can't even see are those families who potentially might have doubled up with their relatives, or, you know, the kid that decides, well, I'm going to go sleep on my friend's couch, or they're living in a hotel necessarily so because the system's not necessarily designed to track all of those. We track maybe some of them, but not all of them. So the demand isn't even really representative of how bad the problem really is, but we just know it's bad and growing worse. So income is a really big factor in that. There are a number of other reasons that people can get into it, but I'll probably just kind of leave it there. In the, or maybe the other thing that I'll say too, is the radius also of workers to their workplace, that keeps growing wider and wider and wider. And so people that used to be able to live like five minutes from their job might be living 20, 30 minutes. They're being pushed out into these rural areas now. And then at some point, that radius is going to expand, and then in the rural areas are also being pushed out. In about 10 years from now, again, if we do some really good modeling and forecasting, it's going to put us into the place where it's going to be like, well, then where are these workers going to go? Because if all of these radiuses keep overlapping, the question is, is then, then what's going to happen? The system is going to implode in on itself. And so, so there are just a number of things that factor into that demand, please. And, you know, the COVID, or Emergency Rental Assistance Funds stabilized a lot of families. That's, that went away. So then, are those families getting ready to fall off a cliff? We're not really for sure. It's, so it's brace for impact, I think, is what I told some people the other day, because it's getting ready to get worse. Inflation rates are going up. And that's not even factoring into some of the supply issues.
Yes, Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. I, I'm curious, I know this is on a system level, so it might not pertain, but I'm, I personally think that one of the greatest things to stabilize our housing is homeownership and being able to own your own place that's consistent and living there more on a permanent basis. Is there any education or anything that you have considered supplying with some people? Because I, I mean, my husband and I have opened up our house to some people that need it. But for a lot of people, even owning a home and filling out all of the forms to try to get a mortgage is over the head of so many people. And is there anything that you guys are doing on that level to try to help increase the education or just the, the ability to own their own house?
Yeah. And so even with homeownership, that is one pathway to housing stability. Again, if you look at that continuum, there are multiple strategies and a complex set of solutions to get people to housing stability. But to speak of the homeownership rate, several of our partners, especially like the ICCF's, Dwelling Places, the Habitats of the World, they have homeownership programs and some capacity building pieces uniquely designed to help build those skills and capabilities within families. Housing Kent's lens, though, is looking through the system perspective. And from the system lens, it's really, well, what are the barriers that are preventing people from getting the homeownership? And so our question is, well, what are the public policies that have prohibited people from owning homes presently, or what prohibited in the past and what prohibited currently? So how then do you redress issues like redlining? Like, how do you correct the system to address those long historic disinvestments so that people who were disenfranchised by those policies can now have an open door to be able to get homeownership? It looks at how then do we work with bankers to potentially redefine the credit merit system? Because if you don't have a good credit established, which many people don't have good credit established, then, then, then can we think about credit differently? Can we define it differently? So if somebody had a blip when they were 18, because maybe they just didn't know how to manage credit, is there a way now that they're 50, as long as they've had consistent payments over a period of time, could we use that to say that they're credit-worthy versus looking at this blip that happened, you know, a long time ago? You know, and are there other systems that we could use? Can we work with realtors to help them to open up the, the market by which they share, they at least show homes? Because there's been study after study that realtors were only target high opportunities to certain people that look a certain way. Can they open up their practices so that they will show high-opportunity neighborhoods to all people and not necessarily have some discriminatory practices even there? And so there are many opportunities along that pathway to homeownership from a system perspective that we would want to look at and to get in to see if we can kind of create, again, a holistic approach that, that would complement, like, a family just getting their own skills or sense of agency to homeownership.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Ms. Eureka, I'd like to say a good job on the documentary that you participated in.
Thank you.
The Finding Home Documentary, I definitely suggest all of the commissioners watch it. I think it's one thing to look at these numbers and to get stuck in that mindset of just numbers, but that documentary does a good job of following what this actually looks like for families and different circumstances that they go through, everything from, you know, somebody who brought up an issue of mold to their landlord and ended up getting evicted because they did that. evicted because they did that. So, I think there's a lot of issues here that need to be addressed and not just by us, but a bunch of different public bodies here. I would like to just say the kind of same thing that I said to Ms. Brooke. Any way that, anything that this body could do, please let us know, specific things that we could implement. And again, things that our state and federal partners could do. And and then finally, you know, I think it's important that we see exactly what it is that the the biggest, where the biggest gaps are essentially. I believe it was also mentioned in that meeting two days ago, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we kind of have enough emergency shelter spaces, but that we need to be focusing on that affordable housing aspect, that that's where the biggest need is. Would that be your opinion as well or what would you say to that?
Well, related to your, well, one, thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide you with information on where we think the commission could could focus and we'll circle back on that piece because I think that's a maybe a different conversation. Related to your question on emergency shelters, at this point, I don't want to weigh in to say, do we have enough emergency shelters or do we not? Because again, when I think across the whole system, I think it's premature for us to make that decision because we don't yet have a good enough understanding of the whole system. And so, before we were, before we would ever take or adjust any one component, I think we need to understand all the components and how they fit together before we would make any determinations on that. So, so that's what I want to be careful to say. And then, when it comes to affordable housing, just just one note, and it's, again, this is the beauty of, this is the beauty of like systems work is when we use terms, sometimes we we all use terms differently. And so, I know when when Brooke was talking about affordable and attainable, like attainable was in the middle, affordable is kind of like on the lower AMI. When I'm talking about affordable, I'm just talking about percent of household income. It doesn't matter what the income is, AMI, that that doesn't matter. So, I just kind of wanted to put that out there for for this question. So, one of the things that we're doing, at least in terms of being able to bring some visualization to the system, is over the next few months, when we when we get this work done, we're working behind the scenes so that anywhere in Kent County, we should be able to map where homes are affordable and for whom. So, we should be able to pull up a map of Kent County and you should be able to look at a neighborhood or a census tract, find out how much the average home sale price is in that neighborhood, figure out what the income, the household income would be to live in that neighborhood, and then be able to compare the average or the area of median income of people in Kent County to see just who is priced out of that neighborhood and then what that gap would be. And again, that will hopefully lead maybe bodies like yours to figure out what are some unique strategies that we need to deploy to be able to close that gap so that more families could be able to have access to their neighborhoods. My gut is, is before we even do that study, that we'll find that a majority of the neighborhoods because of how the supply issue and the demand issue is so high, probably will not, will be surprising to us because the majority of people, based on their household incomes, probably can't afford to live where they're living, is what I'm thinking. And then, we'll need to kind of have some different conversations once that data becomes available.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. People, for coming today. It was, you know, certainly a great presentation. If anything, could you give us, if you can, is there an example of a community, of a region where they have been able to tackle the siloing issue with housing and where there's broader sharing of information, broader sharing of data across platforms so that we can, they have maybe a better picture and can deliver a more efficient response? Are there any communities in this, in the United States that seems to be doing this better than others?
What I will say humbly and from a limited perspective, what I have found is that there are communities who, for example, have taken maybe an issue on the continuum and they've done that well for an issue on the continuum or a particular problem related to housing. I'm having difficulty finding a model or example of a community that's done it for the entire housing system. I find that particularly exciting because I'm an innovator, so I like to do what's never been done before. And so, I'm hopeful that in Kent County, we can do what's never been done before and be a model or one of the first models of how to do that at scale across the entire system. And again, I say that very humbly because, again, it's just our limited research at Housing Kent. We just haven't seen it done at scale. There are gold standards, again, for like data or there's gold standards for, again, it might be how to address the supplier, how to address veterans or how to do these different things, but not how to put it all together to actually do the system-level transformation that we're after. But if you know of one, let me know.
And, you know, if, not to keep continue, prolong this too much longer, but I will at least comment that obviously the siloing in systems is a major problem. As someone who works in the affordable housing system, I know the siloing is a problem. But often, it's an effect, it's a symptom of a a resource gap.
Yes.
And siloing alone, I worry, would not alleviate that underlying issue of resource gap. You know, plainly spoken, we talked about affordable homeownership. If we created a more streamlined process for getting pre-approved, if we fixed issues with credit, if we resolved some of those barriers, we would still face the fact that most of the folks we're talking about would qualify for a mortgage that would not allow them to purchase a home price in this county. And that illustrates that resource gap alone. And while I think it's important to address the siloing, if only because it gets a better picture and can make a better argument that more efficient systems deserve more resources, I would, I I at least wonder, is the hope that Housing Kent will then work with groups like Housing Next, like the Permanent Housing Coordination Council, like the COC to talk about how we can fill that resource gap?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, resourcing will be a part of our mapping process. That's a little bit more complex, right? Because we can, with cooperation, map the current level of investment. So, we have the current level of investment in terms of public and private dollars. So, that that'll be a part of our first-line mapping. Well, I'm sorry, public dollars. Private dollars is a little bit more difficult because then people who give privately will have to be able to share that, but we might be able to backdoor it through some 990s. So, it won't be wholly accurate. But it's what's the harder part is to do the projections on what's required for us to be able to achieve the goals. So, if we do want to scale some of these local practices that are really working and effective, is that a 1.5 million or 1.5 billion-dollar price point? That's the harder conversation and the harder number to determine. But we're working towards at least trying to get a ballpark kind of minimum total investment. I've got that phrase from Ryan Kilpatrick, so that's really good. The minimum total investment to kind of figure out what those numbers are so that then we can have different conversations with funders and even with the public and the private sector to say, look, if if we want to solve the housing crisis in Kent County, we need a collaborative approach to funding and these are where the gaps are and this is where the money needs to go and how it needs to be distributed across the continuum. And even if we can't do the whole continuum funding, because I doubt that we'll be able to do that, we can kind of drill down narrowly into, but if we could just do this level of investment and sustain that across the continuum, we should at least be able to affect change for this population, whatever, maybe it's families and children and have this level of impact from from no housing all the way to House by Choice. So, we're working on it.
Thank you. Right. Commissioner Baker.
Yes, I really appreciate the complimentary role of the two organizations and certainly the work that you're adding to it with going at stability in housing instead of just supply. And also, the way you address issues of displacement and in the community I represent is very, there's a strong concern about displacement. And a group that doesn't get talked about a lot in regards to that displacement are seniors who are in housing that they probably own their fixed incomes and may, but may not be able to stay in that housing or would like to have housing nearby. And so, it's just a different.
Commissioner, can you get a little closer to your mic, please?
I'm sorry. Just a different, I'm just really concerned about the possible displacement of seniors who plays such a significant role in the community beyond just being neighbors, so.
Yeah, when we were on our listening tour around the county, the senior issue came up in a number of the villages, cities and townships. And that's because when it comes to senior housing, there are very few affordable senior living continuum of care facilities that'll take you from where you are through your transition of life. And so, and part of that does get back to a supply issue because if there's no place to build those facilities, if they were to exist, is is one problem. The other problem, obviously, is then, and then who's going to pay for them if they do exist? And so, that senior issue is an extremely complex one that we as a community, I think, really have to give some time and intentionality to because, again, if we don't take care of our elders, then, dare I say, just shame on us. But it, but that is, that is something that that I think if we can have a comprehensive community approach to, we might be able to think through some innovative ways to address the senior aging in place, kind of strategies that that'll be required for us to sustain change. Because even across our continuum now, there's not necessarily a lot of deliberate investment or a lot of deliberate solutions to to deal with that particular issue. That's one of the gaps.
Commissioner Pottstein.
Thank you for being here today, Eureka. So, I mean, I think it's mentioned by others, there are so many problems out there that families face. And one of the thing I always hear is that we've got to build houses within a range of the AMI where 30% of the income, income can go to homeownership. But I don't think what people realize is that the family income isn't stressed by housing costs. I mean, you look at the cost of energy, gasoline, heating, the price of a car to get to a job, get to a shopping mall has skyrocketed. The price of food, up 30, 40%. So, at the end of the day, after the average family goes through all of that, the housing cost isn't the problem. It's everything else piled on. I mean, we came through a pandemic. It exposed all the weaknesses, especially in affordable housing in this country. And we had a country spend over $7 trillion and I think very little of that could have went to problems like this that are facing families. I mean, I think in America, we've got to figure out how we define a home. For so long, it was, we want a home that we want, not one that we need. And we've got to maybe reinvent instead of using the structure we're operating in now is what is a home going to look like going forward? What is that neighborhood around that home going to look like? And do people that live in the inner city that are relying on food at small stores, higher prices, that they don't have to drive to the suburbs in order to get less expensive food or, and 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 the list can go on. I mean, are we going to tackle that or are we going to be still operating under the same system? Because as a county, we had a land bank here and we had figured out at the end of that that we don't have a homeless problem. We don't have an affordable housing problem. And yet, on my way, when I drove in today, I saw tents living in the meeting of the of the highway. Is there a bigger picture here or are we going to still focus on the systems that we have in place now? Because I think it's needs to be something different.
Yeah, I agree with you. The the whole, all the macro systems and all of their connections need to be reevaluated. Unfortunately, Housing Kent can only do housing, right, and work in partnership. I wish I, I wish I could, God, Eureka, Eureka, God, right now. I wish that, I think over, I wish over time, and I think over time it'll be possible, that housing, because it's it's so, it's such a determining factor in education, it's a determining factor in healthcare, it's a determining factor in employment, it's a determining factor in transportation. Like, housing really is central. It's not the only thing that's central, but it is a critical central component of the health and well-being of so many Americans or just people in general. I think housing really is rightfully the priority place to start, to connect to some of these other systems. Because once you could get to housing stability, then it's easier to say, how can we then connect to these other macro systems in in our in our economy and in our world and then be able to make some improvements to those? Because at least you know that families and individuals have a place to live, that they are safe and that they could afford. The housing cost issue, the reason why we place emphasis on it being one of the biggest issues is because typically, the lower the earning income the family, the higher the cost burden of housing. And so, we have that 30% marker in there, but some families are paying 50 to 70% of their household income on housing expenses, which means that when the price of fruit goes up and that banana no longer costs 35 cents, but it costs 75 cents, it has a real big impact. If they have a car, when the when the gasoline prices went from, what, $2 to $5, that means that they probably can't really drive their car anymore because they have no discretionary or no residual income. Because if they have to choose between the roof over their head and the high-priced, you know, gas, they're, you're going to default and prioritize the roof over your head, then that's put stress or burden on these other systems of assistance for food assistance, transportation assistance and other things. And so, if we could stabilize housing and get that affordable, then it also maybe frees up some of the stresses on some of the other systems of assistance until we can kind of work on some of these macro issues. At least that's like our theory of change and how we're approaching it. But but the but but the problems are pervasive, they're compounded, and they, quite frankly, are depressing and can overwhelm you if you really think about it. And so, we're just trying to find a ray of hope in the midst of all the dark clouds and say, but here's what we believe we as a community can do and do well now to begin to make progress. And we just have to hope that we can create some small wins over time to build momentum and hope that others are working on the the food prices, others are working on the transportation and others are working on healthcare and others are working education. And then, at some point in the future, we'll all be able to kind of come together and see that change really is occurring and we really are creating a better community and society for all people.
Well, good. We'll stay on the positive side of that conversation.
Yeah.
Again, thank you so much, Eureka, for your presentation. Also, thank you, I know that you also volunteered to participate on our Housing Fund Committee, so we look forward to working with you on that as well.
Thank you and thanks for loaning us Al for the county commissioner on our board. So, we really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Our next item is public comment. This is public comment on agenda items only. So, if you will, please identify the agenda item that you are going to address. You have up to three minutes.
How you doing, everybody? I'm here to address the housing. First, I want to say feasibility. 3D printing homes. I would love to 3D print homes. I would love to be the first county because we have 34,699 units that we need to create and 22,000 people that are at a disadvantage economically here. We can be the first county. We're the one of the 10 worst counties for economic development and housing. That is terrible. That is terrible. You guys have a lot of work to do, but I have solutions. I have innovative solutions. As she said, like, I have a $2,500 credit towards a 3D printer. We can 3D print homes and put solar panels on those homes and put geothermal energy and clean water filters. As Commissioner Pottstein was saying, because there are so many disadvantages of these big corporations that usually put burdens and usually don't work with bad politicians, I would say, that usually like to keep people at a disadvantage. So, when we need to address those policies, those policies that need to be changed so there's a truly equitable Kent County for our system, for our students, we can change the system and we can be the first county, one of the first counties to 3D print homes and put solar panels and actually print single-family homes and two-story homes where people can have a patio. We can take those people that I take the food from the city of Grand Rapids and I take those, take that food and I take the food that they have and I bring it to the homeless people, people that don't have a house because the city might throw that food away because we throw these large events and then they don't usually know what to do with that food. I have a, I play semi-pro basketball. My basketball coach runs a food pantry. I would love for people to go there because I get boxes of food, like the exclusive food, the good food. And I got a lot of it at my house right now. But we could be the first county to 3D print homes and I have all of the info. I took pictures of those slides, so I'll be reaching out to those organizations to send them that information because I'm truly sick of our, we're the one of the 10 worst counties for economic development and housing. I got solutions. I'm looking at all of you and your faces, every single one of you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else on agenda items only?
Hi, I'm Marcus Rignalda, Gaines Township resident, and I want to talk solutions too. I'm a builder, worked for 15 years for one of the largest affordable housing construction companies in the state and now I do consulting. So, just wanted to share. companies in the state, and now I do consulting. So just wanted to share some anecdotes. At 11 o'clock today, I'm actually meeting a church at Nap and Lefingwell, who's on 17 acres. And zoning right now allows 96 units there, right next to a PUD where they're building much higher density. It's going to take 240 days before we know whether that can change because we have a concept for 234 units. So just one thing I've thought of is encourage your churches, encourage your employers to think about taking that zoning into their own hands. That's a real solution. And then I'm struck by this concept of housing by choice. And having been involved in construction in a lot of things, I see roughly 60% of the crews building our, well, pretty much anything, are Latino, Hispanic, and not many of them building their own homes. And I think there's solutions there, looking to builders, looking to, just reducing that barrier of what we would call soft costs and the regulatory stuff that the people actually doing the hands-on work don't have the resources to build their own homes. So I think, I think that's really a key to that housing by choice is within their own communities, figuring out how to empower those populations to build for themselves, rather than rely on, you know, really huge. We build things way differently than we did in the 50s and 60s when communities were kind of moonlighting and building for themselves. So I think there's, there's solutions there. One other thing, I'm working with a property owner on Wealthy Street, and one of the, one of the biggest barriers to medium-density residential is actually accessibility. ADA adds a huge burden to anything over three units. I'm struck by something early in my career that, haven't explored this fully, but ADA is a federal regulation, and our local municipalities choose to enforce it. But I'm literally working with this property owner to split it in half so he can build two buildings with three units each and avoid a $100,000 cost in annual maintenance of an elevator, which also takes away space. So I'm going to show up to the Housing Kent thing tomorrow. But I think a lot of the solutions, I'm just saying, are working with your builders, and again, just reducing that barrier of all the stuff it takes to, before you break ground. So, thanks.
Thank you. Right, anyone else on agenda items only?
Morning.
Morning.
Thank you for letting me be here today. I'm going to address the water issue, letter H. First of all, my name is Daniel Scott, and like Commissioner DeBoer, my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. And by the way, thank you, Commissioner DeBoer. That was a powerful, powerful testimony. It greatly blessed me and encouraged me, and I can say amen to all that you said. We need more of the Lord Jesus Christ. The water issue. Again, this ties into what is happening less than a couple miles from where we're sitting, 320 East Fulton, and now, by the way, all across our state. Because the murder of choice now for the unborn is the RU-486, the murder pill. And of course, there's all kinds of consequences to that, not only the murder of the innocent, but now tests are proving it's contaminating our water. As these women go home and give birth to a dead child, and the RU-486 that they've been taking is dispensed into the sewer system, it's contaminating our water. I would appeal to you to do all you can to stop this. I think we're all for clean water. I think we're all for clean water. But tests have proven this is destroying our drinking water. Please, I appeal to you. Quick advertisement, if anyone needs free clothing, excuse me, we are offering free clothing at our fellowship at 229 South Division this Saturday, between about noon and 2:00. You all look well dressed, but if you know anyone that needs clothing, we have that every other week, every other month, every other week, I'm sorry. And love to have you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, anyone else on agenda items? Good morning.
Morning. My name is Marcel Price, but people also call me Fable, and I'm also here to talk about the housing issue and the housing crisis currently happening in Kent County. For those of you that are unaware, I've emailed most of you sitting here, or had our productivity liaison, Leslie, email most of you here. And I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to sit down and get to know a lot of you. A lot of you are familiar with us due to misnomers that were spread around. Our organization is an organization that also has a really innovative model for housing, but also for retail spaces, and also an after-school space for young people. This model has rent that is drastically under market rate. It's truly affordable housing, not just a phrase used by developers to make subsidies that allow them to charge the government market rate, yet still making it unaffordable for the people who need it. It's an innovative model that helps mold folks to be more competitive in the housing market. It's slowing the streets down to raise the value of commercial property, which in our neighborhood, a lot of which is owned by black and brown folks. And it will be a catalyst for neighborhood change that will also raise the residential property value, again, owned by a lot of people who are a reflection of the neighborhood. Also, I want you guys to keep in mind the fact that small and mid-scale developments keep dollars in the community, which is something that is truly, truly important. I hope that you all will reach out and get to know us and our organization. When we were originally reaching out to Kent County, some of the misinformation that was spread around is our organization was only a $100,000 organization. In the emails that you all have received this morning, you'll see our last fiscal audit, our audit, because we're an organization that is over $550,000 a year, we need to have financial reviews done that show that we're financially responsible. We're also an organization that on a number of occasions have received federal dollars, not only from CARES Act, but from the National Endowment of the Arts on two different occasions. And we've been great stewards with those dollars time and time again. And I also included our business plan because a lot of people were like, wait, they're poets, you know, how do you get that done? But we have a lot of incredible partners, from our owner's rep to our architect, to our general contractors, that are showing that this isn't only a pipe dream. It's also a project that currently has $1.7 million committed out of the $6 million that it needs. So if we can wiggle free some of those dollars that we have in Kent County, we'll be able to make this destination that people from all around Kent County and all around the country will be able to come and enjoy. Thank you, guys, for your time. I look forward to the, hopefully, the opportunity to meet you and get to know all of you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else on agenda items only?
First one is not an agenda item, but I hope you'll allow it. I've worked a lot of elections and have taken a lot of training from several different communities across the state to become qualified to be a supervisor, an inspector, challenger, whatever.
Sorry, can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Laws, Cedar Springs.
Thank you.
And this week, one of your employees is going to go work somewhere else, and he's run the elections here in Kent County very well for Lisa, and I'm going to miss him. He's helped me personally whenever I've come to the desk or one of his staff has with several election issues and questions. So good luck, Lisa, finding somebody that'll be as good as Jared. So that was my first 92nd one. Second one has to do with these three citizens here on the first row. I don't know if you've noticed how well behaved they are. If we could get all of our citizens, starting when they're very young, and I say that because for five years, I got to be a Mr. Mom with three children, and now I have an attorney, a small business entrepreneur, and a nurse. I didn't do that all, you know, there's a mom and a dad, but I got to be at home because my wife had a degree and I hadn't finished mine yet, so she can make more money. So until we got the kids into school and I go back to school to get my degree, I got to do that. So I got a little bit better perspective and appreciate, Matt, how well behaved they are. And I think that... Now, so this goes to every single item on your agenda. If we raise our citizens that way, and the parents do their job, well, it's not a job. If the parents are able to do the things that they want to do because they want to procreate and continue to, you know, populate the earth and everything, I think things get done. And individually, I think that's where we need to address our issues. If you look at the people outside of parents that have the most influence, for me, I look at Dr. King, Gandhi, I look at Mother Teresa. They worked individually with people. They didn't try to do big, wonderful, huge, monstrous things. And I think if you look at civilizations in general, from the Romans and the Greeks and the, you know, the Golden Age of the Muslims and the Incas and the Mayans, they fell apart when they got too big on one end and forgot about the individual unit of society, which is the family. If we're successful as a family, we're going to be fine civilization-wise, Kent County-wise, Michigan-wise, country-wise, worldwide. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on agenda items only?
Today on your agenda, Resolution 8, CN8, HH. Oh, my name's Doug Lee, Cascade, Long-Term Cascade resident. You're voting on items related and administered and overseen by our Health Department. I'd like to share past actions of our Health Department and my lack of confidence in the judgment of Health Director Adam London. In Kent County Public Schools, most parents, grandparents, schools administrators, teachers, and school board members acknowledge there's a two-year learning loss that affect tens of thousands of Kent County students. In most corporations, if an employee exerted that much damage due to the bad judgment call, he or she would be terminated. That's not the case in government. Bad judgment calls are commonplace because most decisions are based on political science and not factual science. Today, history and real science has proved our position, a mandatory masking of kids in public education were not effective. Do you remember the big Commissioner meeting in 2021 when we had spoken with evidence and case study in hand? I asked the selected body to immediately terminate Adam London as a Health Director. Bad decisions that affect tens of thousands of students should have consequences. Many in this body do not believe you have the power to terminate him. You were actually advised by an attorney that understands the interpretive law. You would easily see you well within your right to do so. Phrases like "can't be done," "never been done before," "we don't have the power" are words of uninformed and weak and lazy leaders. You need to stand for the tens of thousands of kids that Adam London affected with bad decisions. The excuse that we did not know at the time is no excuse. I handed each of you the necessary motion language to bring justice to Kent County. I hope you today will have civilly discussed and debate in full public display this issue. Politics should be on full display to the citizens that elected you and not backroom deals and private conversation. This was the process of our forefathers did when they created the Great American Experiment. I would further ask Almighty God to provide wisdom, protection, and strength to each and every one of you. I also want to comment on the housing that was brought up earlier. Certainly, we do have housing deficiencies, and I won't discount that. But instead of looking for successes, why don't we look for failures of the past? Detroit spent billions, hundreds of billions of dollars with the exact same solutions that were presented here in total and utter failure. The solution is simple for housing. Teach a man to fish, and they will eat for a lifetime. Build the family unit up. None of those were discussed as a solution here today to solve housing problems. You can bring people out of poverty through education, building the family unit. It's a pretty simple solution, but one from which never is tried. Learn from Detroit, over $100 billion, and a city that's desecrated that tried to do the exact same thing. So instead of look for cities that provide a solution, look for their failures. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Agenda items only. All right, if not, we'll then move to our next item, which is the consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner DeBoer.
I make a motion to give consent of the agenda.
To approve the consent agenda. Is there support?
Supporting.
Supported. Discussion. All right. If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Boujack, Diaz, Pakla, Wooden, Baker, LaGrand, Oliver King, Hennessy, McLeod, Sparks, Teal, Vice Chair Breevy, Commissioners Coleman, Burl, Ponstein, Hildenbrand, DeBoer, Merchant, Antor, Green, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. I will note for Commissioners, if you would please turn in the closed session minutes that were distributed in your envelopes, make sure those get back to either the clerk or legal counsel. All right, we'll now move on to our resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden for our first resolution of the day.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move the adoption of Resolution 18 of today's date, funding and personnel to implement the KCCA weatherization bipartisan infrastructure law. It comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Discussion. I see none. So, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 18, Commissioners Boujack, Diaz, Pakla, Wooden, Baker, LaGrand, Oliver King, Hennessy, McLeod, Sparks, Teal, Vice Chair Breevy, Commissioners Coleman, Burl, Ponstein, Hildenbrand, DeBoer, Merchant, Antor, Green, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 18 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move, excuse me, to our next item, Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move Resolution Number 19 of today's date, Personnel to Implement the Weatherization Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Grant. This comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Diaz. Any questions or comments? I see none. This also is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 19, Commissioners Boujack, Diaz, Pakla, Wooden, Baker, LaGrand, Oliver King, Hennessy, McLeod, Sparks, Teal, Vice Chair Breevy, Commissioners Coleman, Burl, Ponstein, Hildenbrand, DeBoer, Merchant, Antor, Green, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 19 is adopted.
All right, we'll now move to Item C, our next resolution, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 20 of today's date, Spectrum Health Early Childhood and Millage Strong Beginnings Grant that comes to us from the Health Department.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Boujack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Although I support the Strong Beginning Program service and that it provided, that it provides, I cannot support the grant. And my no vote will be a vote of no confidence in our administrator of the grant, Adam London. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Commissioner DeBoer.
I've had a constituent reach out to me, and I've done a little bit of looking into this program, and I'm having a hard time myself having the somewhat moral or political ideology of some of what I have seen of this program and what I can even read for you a little bit online. So it looks like there's breastfeeding and also chest feeding.
Resolution 19 is adopted.
All right, we'll now move to Item C, our next resolution, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 20 of today's date, Spectrum Health Early Childhood and Milage Strong Beginnings Grant that comes to us from the Health Department.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Boujack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Although I support the Strong Beginnings Program service and that it provided, that it provides, I cannot support the grant, and my no vote will be a vote of no confidence in our administrator of the grant, Adam London. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Commissioner DeBoer.
I've had a constituent reach out to me, and I've done a little bit of looking into this program, and I'm having a hard time myself having the somewhat moral or political ideology of some of what I have seen of this program and what I can even read for you a little bit online. So it looks like there's breastfeeding and also chest feeding support, and it also looks like there is family planning classes and discussions. And I personally just didn't feel completely confident on voting yes on it, or I personally feel, don't personally feel confident voting yes on this, just because I am unsure of some of what is going on in these programs. And I think it's doing a lot of good, and I think it's helping a population that needs help, and so I don't want to diminish any of the good work that they're doing, but at the same time, I personally cannot be confident in voting yes.
All right, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I wonder if it would be possible right now to get a little bit about the statistics that this program, in terms of its successes in reducing postnatal infant mortality. You know, Strong Beginnings has been a successful program administered by our Health Department for, I want to say, two decades now. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, as I spoke at a previous meeting, public health officers, their responsibility is to tackle the issue bestowed to them. It's not to editorialize and to serve whatever patient they have and whatever client they have, much like a doctor provides the service the patient has requested. And so I was just wondering if you could at least speak to the successes we've had with our clients in reducing infant mortality rates through the life of this project.
Chair, good morning, everyone. My name is Joanne Hogenson, and I'm the Director of Community Wellness at the Health Department, and the Strong Beginnings Program falls in my division. And just for clarification, I am so proud of the work that Strong Beginnings does. We have community health workers. We also have accompanying programs like MIHP, which employs nurses, social workers, and dietitians. But this is a model that uses community health workers, people from the very community that our most vulnerable young moms are part of, and they go in and they make home visits to these young women prenatally and for the first 18 months of the baby's life in order to give support. And the funding originally came to us because of the disparities in infant mortality. It came to us specifically because at the time we were funded, black and brown babies were dying at three times the rate of white babies. And so this is a very focused program, using the very people that have the most connection with the community and sending them into the home. And they're supporting things like safe sleep and breastfeeding and good nutrition, car seats, all of those things which are going to promote healthy beginnings of life for these children who potentially would die. And so I'm proud of it. I think it's a tremendous program. It's made a difference. Our infant mortality rate is coming down from at 1.30 to right now about 2.4, but there are still, 2.4 times as many children of color die than white children. But there's still so much work to be done, and that's why using every tool in our tool chest, including Strong Beginnings, is part of what we're trying to do to make this, make a difference in our community. It is a very pro-family, pro-baby, pro-equity approach to making a difference in our community.
Good point. I think some of the answer to that is also in the resolution, so. All right, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to say I love this program. I was the recipient of this program, Strong Beginnings Program, when I had my son over 20 years ago. Don't judge me. And Ms. Suzie was my nurse.
Yeah, and she still works there, by the way.
She's amazing, and she allowed me. Breastfeeding is one of the most beautiful things in the world, but it's one of the hardest, you know, especially when you're, you don't know, is this pain going to end? Am I doing it correctly? Is my baby eating enough?
Yeah.
And what I loved about that program and Ms. Suzie was she was so patient with me. She was kind, and because of her, I nursed one son until he was two and a half and the other until he was three. So this program is a program that I know many people of color have benefited from, and so I definitely will be voting for this. Thank you, including myself, so thank you.
Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you for being here and for leading this amazing work. I know you do a wonderful job, and thank you for pointing out how pro-baby and pro-family this is, because it's really important for us to know that a commitment to life doesn't stop when someone gives birth. The support making it possible for that child to thrive, to survive at birth, is incredibly important. So thank you for all that you do.
All right, anyone else? If not, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 20, Commissioners Boujack.
No.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
No.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 21 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next motion, I will call on Commissioner Boujack.
I'd like to make a motion to support the Sheriff's Office's request to provide school resource officer for Kentwood Public Schools.
Is it supported by Commissioner Teal? Any questions or comments on this one? I see none. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 22, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 23 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next resolution, I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I move Resolution Number 24, Appointments to Various Boards.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner McLeod? Questions or comments? I see none. This also is a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 24, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 23 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next resolution, I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I move Resolution Number 24, Appointments to Various Boards.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner McLeod? Questions or comments? I see none. This also is a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 24, Commissioners Boujack.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 23 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next resolution, I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 25 of today's date for the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, Non-Community Water Supply, Long-Term Monitoring, Campgrounds, and Public Swimming Pools by the Health Department.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Breevy? Questions or comments on this one? Yes, Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. As most of you know, I'm currently a student at Grand Valley State University. I am majoring in political science there, and one of the things that we talk about often is the dangers of misinformation. So I, it took me all of two minutes to find this quote that I'd like to share with everybody. This comes from Nathan Donley, the Environmental Health Science Director for the Center for Biological Diversity, who has written citizen petitions to the FDA. He said pharmaceutical contamination of water is a serious issue that can have serious impacts on the environment, but trying to say that one drug out of thousands is having an outsized effect is based on ideology, not evidence. Of all the drugs and synthetic chemicals we shed that can potentially contaminate water, of boarding fashions are a fraction of a fraction of a percent. It's nothing. So I like to say that to say that I would definitely be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Boujack.
I do support the grant. However, this being related to the Health Department, my vote of no will be a vote of no confidence for our Administrator Al, Adam London, for administering this grant. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five, Commissioners Boojak.
No.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Callman.
Yes.
Earl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor. Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution twenty-five is adopted.
Thank you. I will now call on Commissioner McLeod for our next resolution.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution twenty-six, Wabasus Lake Lake Level, submitted to us by the Drain Commission.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Breevy. Any questions or comments? No Beaver questions this time? All right, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-six, Commissioners Boojak.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Callman.
Yes.
Earl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor. Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution twenty-six is adopted.
Thank you. For our next resolution, I will again call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution twenty-seven of today's date, Five Lakes Lake Level, submitted to us by the Drain Commission.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Earl. Questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner McLeod.
So I just wanted to ask about the attachment that was provided for Five Lakes. When we were hearing from the Drain Commissioner during finance about this, the attachment was not the correct one, and so now we have the correct one. And it appears that the average cost to the residents is now clearly identified as more like a thousand dollars per, as opposed to what we thought initially, and I just wanted to just ask if that is something, like how that's been, again, communicated to the residents, that that is going to be the cost that they're going to be having to pay for this assessment.
They've, they've been sent notice by mail as required under the, the drain code or the, the lake level code requirement.
Okay, and just to follow up on that, and so is there any provision for those residents who may have a hardship for, you know, being able to, to pay those assessments?
No, the law doesn't give us that ability to do that. So I usually work with, with the people and the, where I can help them is by stretching it out. And I can, working with the county, I can go six years on payments. There is an interest charge at that time, but I can finance up to six years under county.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions or comments? If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-seven, Commissioners Boojak.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Callman.
Yes.
Earl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
No.
Antor. Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution twenty-seven is adopted.
Thank you. For our next resolution, I will call on Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to move the adoption of Resolution twenty-eight of today's date, Eagle MMCE Grant Support for Kent County from the Department of Public Works.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Breevy. Questions or comments? I see none. Madam Clerk, another roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-eight, Commissioners Boojak.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Callman.
Yes.
Earl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor. Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution twenty-eight is adopted.
Thank you. And for our last resolution of the day, I will call on Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution twenty-nine of today's date, the KCCA Weatherization, Consumers Reimbursements, Kent County Community Action.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner McLeod? Questions or comments? All right, if not, can you do this one more time for us, Madam Clerk?
You bet, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-niner, Commissioners Boojak.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Ol, Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Callman.
Yes.
Earl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Antor. Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution twenty-niner is adopted.
Thank you. We will now move to the next item on our agenda, which is our second public comment opportunity. This is with respect to matters that are within the general jurisdiction of the county. And if you will identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. Stay at nine six seven Temerick Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan, Northwest, four nine five oh four. In case you want to see me out in my neighborhood, I will stand out in my neighborhood and stare at you. But I would like to say, I'm never going to apologize for being passionate because I expect a lot from the government. I've learned from just growing up on Social Security and SSI that the government is always going to work for your neighborhood or in your favor. And so I expect my Kent County Commissioners as this new commissioning body, you guys have a lot of work to do. This is one of the top ten worst cities for housing, and I expect you guys to do the best that you can to make sure regardless of political party, political affiliation, the donations you take from organizations or people, that you guys put people first, because that's why you ran for office, right? To change, to change the lives of people, to create equity and, and change for people, right? That's why you ran for office, right? Because I wouldn't run for office if I didn't have that ability, if I feel like I didn't do, wanted to do it for people, if I didn't love and care for people, if I didn't care about, you know, with policies and people and policies that affect people's everyday lives. You guys are powerful people that have changed and create change on people's everyday lives, my lives, these people's lives. And I expect you guys to do the best that you can, to the best of your ability. And if you guys don't want to approve a policy, I, I, I like that you Commissioners explain why you didn't do that. I can, I can acknowledge that and I can say he, he did say why he didn't support that. But I expect you guys to be vocal and brave and courageous and have courage and put your boots on and, and stand up for the community and stand up for people that need you every day. Because even people like me need you every day to do your job, to create equitable housing, to create innovative housing solutions, to create an equitable Kent County. I don't even want to talk about my project, but I, thank you Kent County Sheriff's Department for supporting me so I could bring better police and community relations and community trust because I really care about my community and I give it all my all every single day with a hundred percent passion, everything that I have for this community. And I like that gray suit, Board Chair. You look good in the gray suit. So do I, but I like that suit. And I just really care about this community and you guys are one of the top ten worst counties in America for housing and economic development, and I expect you guys to do the best that you can to come up with creative solutions, and I will be at that event at nine AM. I will be at the Center of Community Transformation trying to create and give ideas and things that can transform our community, things that can put us in a better light, because I know you guys didn't light the light of the killing of Patrick Leoi, and people won't forget about that, but we can push forward from that and create equitable solutions and then create happiness and create love, something that the world needs. The world needs people to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or morning.
Daniel Allen Scott, once again. Resident of Kent County for almost fifty years. Once again, God's holy word says, "This act does the Lord hate. This is an abomination unto Him, hands that shed innocent blood." Last meeting I was here, Commissioners Wooden and Diaz expressed publicly that they were all for reproductive rights and the murder of children in the womb. My question to you is what about the rights of the children murdered like this? That's what happens at three twenties Fulton, one of their procedures. I spoke about RU four eighty-six. This is what it does. Starves the womb of progesterone. The success rate of RU four eighty-six is only about fifty-four percent. Induces powerful contractions of the uterus and causes the dead baby to be expelled from the womb, most often in the home. It may cause hemorrhage, requiring blood transfusions, severe pain requiring strong painkillers, incomplete murders or abortion, ruptures of the uterus, vaginal bleeding, abdominal cramping, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, headache, muscle weakness, dizziness, flushing, chills, backache, difficulty in breathing, chest pain, palpitations, rise in temperature and fall in blood pressure. This is not just your normal pharmaceutical. Because of the way RU four eighty-six is administered, the woman is involved in the whole process. She takes the tablets herself and is fully aware of the effects that the drugs are having on her body as they happen. It is possible for the baby to come away while she is at home, possibly alone, thus leading to death for the woman because there's no medical people close by. It has been likened, you can look this up online, as a pesticide, a human pesticide. Please, support our fellow Kent County citizens that are being murdered within two miles from here. One hundred and twenty every month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. Hi, my name is Richa. I live at five four three Prince Street, Southeast in Grand Rapids. In twenty twenty, just three years ago, there was a former California Mayor, Michael Tubbs, who started a group called Cities for Guaranteed Income. In just those three years, a hundred cities have joined this group. Recently, that group has expanded to counties for guaranteed income. There are twenty counties now. In fact, the two counties have had the biggest programs. Several have had grassroots programs experimenting with this with relatively small groups because that's all they have the funding for, are two of the counties. And that makes sense because counties are the ones that oversee generally the, the welfare and administer the welfare, not the cities. Just to give you an idea, it's usually called a universal basic income or sometimes a basic income guarantee. It's something that's gained support from some for, back from the beginning of the country. Tom Paine was a strong supporter of it. Supporters include, just for example, more recently, on the liberal side, Martin Luther King Jr., Labor Leader Andy Stern. On the conservative side, Charles Murray, economist Milton Friedman. And then, of course, people like Andrew Yang, who, who brought it to a lot of attention in the presidential campaign, centrists, more centrist people. I want to urge you to look into this. The website on this, let me just say, is pretty simple, countiesforaguaranteedincome.org. That can give you, you know, basic on the counties. I urge you to look, use your search engine and just search in universal basic income. If you're not real familiar with it, there's tons of info out there. You'll have to be careful in what you look at, but it'll give you a real good idea of where you're going. It's something that's actually been done in the state of Alaska for nearly forty years. A former Republican governor started it, and it's, for that forty years, it's had tremendous popular support. The idea is to get at the city and county level grassroots support and eventually move it to the federal level because that's where the funding is going to have to come. So I'm basically here to just urge you to look into this and consider joining the effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I grew up in Washtenaw County. I went to a high school that was maybe fifty-five. Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, Mark from, Mark Laws from Cedar Springs. My high school makeup, as far as ethnicity and race, was probably fifty-five, maybe sixty percent white. And then we had eight or nine other ethnicities that made up the other forty-five, fifty percent. I had, one of my good friends end up being a Harvard graduate and is now an attorney. Another friend ended up winning a Super Bowl ring with the Cincinnati Bengals. Another friend of mine is a right-hand man to a college president. All three of these guys are different ethnicities. Their ethnicity and the color of their skin, they didn't get to choose that. I don't think any of us get to choose the color of our skin or our ethnicity. I think we got to forget about that when we're looking at things. Look at, look at all the other statistics and all the other influences on, on the numbers. Don't, don't go by, you know, black and white or, or Latino. I could care less about that. My parents didn't teach me that way. They taught me that that was something that people would take that quarter and put it so close to your eye that you couldn't see anything else, and they'd hold that race thing in front of you and, you know, tell you this and tell you that. I, I was never raised that way, so I don't look at that. I could care less. I got friends of twenty-five different ethnicities. And I look at them on the content of their character. I look at them on how good a citizens they are. I look at them at how good a fathers they are, parents, grandparents now, I'm getting to that part. Should have had the grandkids first, right? Anyway, the more we get out of the way of families and individuals, and I know my, my pal here likes, likes to see government do things, I'd rather see government do nothing, almost. Very small portion of government should do, maybe protection and judicial system, but get out of the way and let individuals figure out what's best because they're going to figure out what's best for them, for their community. The more you can get to the community level, the better solution you're going to have. Because I think you guys do a really good job for Kent County, but I go to Lansing and I'm like, oh, my gosh, it's terrible. You know, I like what my, we're having some issues with some of our city council members in Cedar Springs and I wish, you know, but then we vote the next time it comes up and they don't get reelected. So the closer that problem is to us as individuals, I think we have better solutions. So do what you can to just get out of the way and let people get on to raising their kids, running their businesses, going to their church or their synagogue or their mosque, whatever. Some of them don't want to go to church at all, and that's great too, but be a good citizen, be a, be a contributor. Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Marcus Ringdall, a Gaines Township resident, and I'm here to promote DeAndre's esports event because he ran out of time at the Four Star Theater. Just wanted to provide you all an update. Those of you who don't know, we did receive a half million dollar ARPA allocation, and I'm very appreciative of that. We did hold an open house last month, our first public meeting. We, in addition to DeAndre's thing, we have, we're celebrating Jackie Robinson Day in conjunction with the fans of Valley Fields, so there's exclusive rights to a film. The producers will come to the theater. We're expecting potentially a sellout with a number of partners coming together for that. So April fifteenth, seven PM, I'd like to invite you all to that. We also in April have what's called a Trova Fest, which is Cuban folk music. We call it the first annual. We call a lot of things there the first annual. So right now we have occupancy at two fifty with our plans, which we are still a couple million dollars away from achieving. We'll expand our occupancy to nine hundred. So I would just like to encourage you to consider, whether it's theater or not, opening up the balance of your ARPA funds to community projects, maybe learn some lessons from the first time. I know it's only a fraction that's left, but look for the projects that are doing good in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning again.
Good morning. My name is Marcel Price. I live in the four nine five zero seven, south side of Grand Rapids. Mr. Ponstein brought up a point earlier that I feel like we didn't spend enough time focusing on. He said, "A home is where you feel welcome." And I think that's something that we need to consider when we make a lot of decisions moving forward as a county and as a city and as people who do work in community. I also think that it's important that we remember that a home is also a reflection of the neighborhood around it. So when we're investing in neighborhoods, when we're investing in projects, we should really make sure that the, the projects that we're reflect, that we are investing in is a reflection of the people. And we believe that neighborhoods should be somewhere where folks can live, work, and play, molded by the people who have lived, worked, and played there. I'm not somebody who, like some of my colleagues, is, is somebody who identifies with faith just because I, I don't necessarily know what I should and shouldn't believe in, but I know that my cousin, who is a very religious human being, tells me that my story is biblical. She says that not everybody gets put through the extreme tests and trials that you have at the young age that you have, and that might be because you're trying to manifest things that are so much larger than yourself. Four years ago, my wife was diagnosed with terminal cancer, and I proudly stood by her side as she went through this journey. Two years ago, she was then diagnosed with terminal cancer, and I watched her pass at the age of thirty. And going through that was, was wildly challenging. But it wasn't until I had my experience with the Kent County Commission where I truly felt devastated and felt like something that I put years and years of our lives into could be ripped away because people would make us out to be something that we weren't. And it felt cruel. It, it felt like people were judging us for things that they could have just asked us questions for. It felt like people wanted us to be made out to be somebody that we weren't, that we were vilified. And so many students of ours wrote you guys letters, asking you guys to see the value in what we did, and people refused to. And people made what we do about politics when so many people in the community vouch for what we do because they know that it's about people. And I just want to say that you guys said that you wanted me to be more involved with you all. We hope to see you more involved. You commended me on my response after the last time. And it's really hard for me to come here because I'm struggling to believe in you after the last time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Boone, Ada Township. On February seven, I had the honor of being part of a private meeting with Adam London for the purposes of a long-awaited Q and A session regarding his handling of the COVID pandemic. Thank you, Al, Chair Steck, Commissioners Antor, Callman, and DeBoer for being there with me and a few of my colleagues and friends. I'm not sure if any of you have received the minutes from that meeting yet. We were promised those, and I have not received that, and it's been over a month now. In the fall of 2021, after it became abundantly clear that Mr. London had been colluding on the back end with the KISC superintendents and Spectrum Health to issue a mask mandate, days after announcing that it would be parent choice for school, many of you reached out to Adam to question this decision on behalf of your concerned constituents. Thank you. In a letter to the Commissioners dated August twenty-two, 2021, Mr. London expressed only support for masking, disregarding the concerns of thousands of parents and healthcare professionals speaking to the opposite. His letter was insubordinate, stating that he did not wish to participate in witch trials and be reduced to the same stage as people living in echo chambers of junk science. Much of that junk science has now been proven to be true. He taunted, he even dared you all in that letter to fire him, censure him, or pass a resolution condemning him. He thought that if he told you that he was a Christian who goes to church every Sunday, that you would have pity on him. In response, the Commissioners called Adam London to be part of a regular board meeting on September twenty, 2021, to which over a thousand concerned parents attended and hundreds spoke in question of the unconstitutional mandates. Adam was asked to show science and data. He was asked to prove the unconstitutional mandates. He was asked to prove the imminent danger he spoke of. In reply, he walked off the camera. He abandoned the duties of his job that day. He was begging not to be held accountable to you or the people of Kent County. In reality, he fell for the mainstream narrative, and we all know that. It's a matter of why. Doctors and medical professions, professionals were silenced and ignored. Adam abandoned the multidisciplinary approach he is bound to when making public health policy. We all know masks don't work. Over one hundred and fifty peer-reviewed studies have proven that to all of us, and you all know it because you're not wearing one right now. The science of viruses has not changed. It does not change. There has been zero follow-up to this meeting that I am aware of, including none of us have received the minutes. I ask that you, as a board, get together and ask some tough questions of Adam London. Get to the bottom of this. You owe it to the people of Kent County, and you owe it to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Robert Cribs. I live in Grand Rapids. Actually, I wasn't planning to come up and speak, but after listening to Mr. Lee, Mr. Boone, and Mr. Laws, decided to do so. I am a coach, a teacher, and a referee, and mostly the referee, I do it for.
And mostly the referee, I do it for elementary schools. I teach now in the Grand Rapids School District. I've watched kids in my coaching time, especially in Forest Hills, wearing these masks and being told by the principal that we have to follow this Adam London's rules. The kids would come to me as we're playing basketball, "Coach, take me out, take me out. I can't breathe." Because I had to have them wear this mask over their face. When they dropped down below their face, I didn't say anything until one of the administrators said, "Robert, you need to make sure it's over their face." To have these kids wear masks like this was just horrible. They'd be wet, they'd be soaked. Then I have also, as a teacher in Grand Rapids, I see kids that have to wear masks today. As a teacher, that's a parent's decision to make. I don't tell the kid, "Well, why are you wearing your mask? Take it off." Even though it's full of mustard, it's full of food. Kids are, again, they're doing this all the time, pulling it up and down. It's a parent's decision. So I let the parents make the decision. If they want their kids to wear it, they should. But the whole point is to have this man here tell all these kids, "You have to wear masks" and not let that up to the parents is wrong. I'm seeing kids really be screwed up because of it. Now, follow up on Mr. Loth's deal about color. I teach school with elementary kids. I have a class that I have been teaching now, I did it two days in a row. There wasn't a white kid in the class. They were all either Hispanic and black. They didn't care about color. They came up to me, holding my hand, asking me, "Will you come out and have recess with us?" "Well, sure. Would you like to do something on recess?" They said, "What do you suggest?" I said, "Simon Says." So I went out with the kids. We played Simon Says. Other kids joined us. I'm the only one out there, so-called white. I go back in the classroom, they ask me to have lunch with them. I have lunch with them. I sit there, one of the teachers said, "What are you doing? How, why are you doing that? You can go up to the teacher's lounge." I said, "No, the kids want me with them." There was no color. I get in the high school area, it changes. Why? Why does it change when you get into high school that all of a sudden now I'm the old white guy? But all through the elementaries here in Grand Rapids, I'm somebody they want to be with. We've got to change the mindset of this because I see it. You guys all can say, "Well, yeah, have you been in the school system?" Well, I have. I'm just saying, this man here, Adam, should be removed because I've seen the hurt that it has done with kids and the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Wayne Grider, Solon Township. I'll stand in support of those that are asking for Adam London's removal as well. I also want to direct to you, Mr. Chair. I've sent an email to you and, like the others, I said they have not received minutes from the past meeting. I have not received a response from you from an email. I have written to other board members as well on that same email and received responses. I don't understand why you guys cannot respond to your constituents. It's extremely unfair. People are calling out your, "What's going on here with the board?" I believe they have every right to. You guys need to respond to your constituents. We will remove you if we need to. But you need to understand where we're coming from. I don't want to be here in the morning anymore than any of you guys do. But you need to listen to us. And that's, point is directly to you, Mr. Chair. I mentioned that in the email. Maybe you read the email and chose not to respond to me because of that. But you owe me a response, sir.
Anyone else?
Craig Ladyman, Rockford, Michigan. Wanted to come up and address the Adam London situation and the Kent County Board of Health. To even call them a board of health is questionable in marketing terms because what are they doing that is promoting health? Masks weren't very healthy. Vaccines weren't absolutely a good choice. Putting things in your rectum at the colleges and having classes sponsored by the Health Department isn't exactly a healthy choice either. I think one of my favorite rappers from the 90s says, "Big things in your butt is bad for your health." What we've been dealing with is basically nothing but deceit and concealment and fraud. The bad thing about fraud is that it's been perpetrated on people and it's caused some injury. The good thing about fraud is the fact that there's no statute of limitations. Once it's discovered, once it's determined, once it's been realized, then people start paying for what they've done to damage our community. Utilizing their fraudulent tactics and junk science based on political ideology, not scientific ideology, you've decided to go ahead and take the liberties of the people. This being done in an unelected position, something where he was not appointed, you people appointed. So therefore, we are transferring the responsibility under your oath of office. If someone that you hire damages the people of this county fraudulently and you're the ones that are hiring them, you will be held in account. We hold people in account using the power of our pen. Not the power of the mob, not the power that we're going to burn down your buildings. Power of the pen exists on the third floor of that building, right over there, in the federal courthouse. You can go over there and file a Title 42 lawsuit against anybody that's a sitting person that's been elected. If they decided through their actions that you can go ahead and prove with evidence, that you can file that claim. You can file that claim in the form of imparis, which means that you have zero dollars. If you're going to continue to have an unelected bureaucrat like Adam London utilize his political fraudulent science to mask kids, to jab kids that eventually injure people, both in their mind, body, and soul, we need to rethink the Health Department. We need to rethink why it's in schools. We need to rethink why it's in every facet of our life. We need to rethink why are we listening to these particular people who have decided to defraud our community? And we need to make some changes. I yield back my time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Erin Kreisen and I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I wanted to get up and say a few words. So I am a community member. I have lived in Grand Rapids for almost 20 years now and I've worked in our community as a youth development professional for a number of years. I'm also a parent. So I live in Northview Township or Northview School District. I work downtown. But I've had the opportunity to see the impact of the Diatribe across our entire county, our entire community. From the youth that I've worked with at the organizations that I've been at, I've heard their testimonies, I've heard their passion. And from shopping at the grocery store. So I was at the Meyer Plainfield and I ran into students of the Diatribe and I knew they were students of the Diatribe because they had shirts and they had passion. And I spoke to them and they said, "Diatribe changed my life." So I don't know as a community why we aren't supporting projects that are actively changing and shaping our children for the better. I work in nonprofits. I could get up here and say, "My project needs money," but that's not the point. The point is there is an amazing organization doing really good work, really critical work. And I think more attention should be paid to that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, if not, we'll close public comment and move to the next item on our agenda, which is the Administrator's Report.
And other than my normal weekly communication, I really have nothing today.
Well done. We move to the next item, which is reports. Are there any reports from Commissioners? Yeah, we'll start over here in the end. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. So we had our Community Corrections Advisory Board meeting on February 22. And I would like to bring something to the attention of you all. There are, there is an issue in our local court system as far as substance abuse programs. So there was a nonprofit that was helping out a lot during the pandemic and prior to that. And that nonprofit has shut down for various reasons. And so our local courts are looking for nonprofits specifically to help with substance abuse programs. They mentioned that over 350 people are being affected now by the shutdown of that program. And so I'm asking you all and also the public if you have any suggestions as far as nonprofits that can help with substance abuse programs. Please let me know or direct them to the board or to the Community Corrections Advisory Board. They are looking for those substance abuse programs for the next fiscal year. There is another nonprofit that is trying to fill in that gap, but they simply do not have the capacity to do so, to fill in that wide of a gap. So that is my report from the Community Corrections Advisory Board. There's also Tim and Barb that you can communicate with at the Community Correction or at the court. And I will be shadowing a probation officer next week to learn a little bit more. So that's my report for CCAB.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Peckler?
I did not have my hand up. Thank you.
Well, give us a report. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. Kent County Community Actions Governing Board met for the first time this year. We, it's our time, you know, as many of you know, the governing board consists of three county commissioners and two city commissioners due to the partnership. And we alternate years in chairing and vice-chairing. We get to chair this year, so fun. Additionally, we discussed how KCCA has been successful in administering the funding directly awarded to them as a result of the American Rescue Plan, plans for the funds that they are currently in the process of expending that we have appropriated or passed through to them through the federal grant process. And also talking about continued efforts to streamline KCCA services, especially when it comes to weatherization. Also, a few days later, Commissioner Diaz and I were lucky to join KCCA staff and volunteers in participating in the Walk for Warmth, which is an annual event to help raise additional funds to support households on the margins who are struggling to pay utility bills over the winter. And it was the first time in two years that they were able to do it. So we had our walk and even got to bring, I think he was titled the honorary commissioner, Sam Wooden, but he had a blast as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other reports? Okay, sorry about that, Commissioner. All right, if not, we'll move to miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous items? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Steck. So during the presentation, I talked about what a home should look like. And I guess I should have just waited for DeAndre to come up because I came up with this idea that maybe we should make 3D homes. And I'm sure a lot of you had a smile on your face, people in the audience and people watching on TV, they said, "We're going to use 3D printers for, you know, to build houses." But DeAndre, as soon as you said that, it took me back to a, to a speech that I heard by a guy named Nick Ebling. And he owns a company called The Not Impossible Labs. And he is a person that, he's won the Muhammad Ali Humanitarian Year Award. He top 50 the most creative people in the world. He has three times won the Tribeca Disruptor Awards and two times the Fast Company World-Changing Ideas. Now, the reason I bring this up is that Mick has a different way of looking at things. He first got on this trail of finding new ideas is when he lives on Venice Beach and he walked by all these homeless people every day without food and he decided a way to maybe get food to them. He developed an app that linked into the restaurants. Whenever there was excess food, they packaged it up and it wasn't delivered to the people. The, you know, he wanted to show these people some dignity. So he set up a process where they would go into the restaurant, say, "I've got to take order out." Their name's already on it. They took it and they could walk away and eat it by themselves. But the biggest thing that he did was he visited the Sudan. And you have civil wars in all the parts of Africa where some of the rival militias will launch bombs into these communities with children and families and they're loaded with shrapnel. It's not so much to kill the people or destroy buildings, but arms, limbs, hands, feet have just been ripped off these kids. And he had had a chance to visit there and he said, "There's got to be something to do." And, you know, they did this research. If we would get prosthetics for all of them, it would cost hundreds of millions of dollars to solve this problem. But he showed up one day in a plane that was rented, unloaded three large cargo wooden boxes. And inside those boxes were 3D printers. And he came up with the idea that prosthetics for arms, legs, and everything else can be made for $100. And he went on and set up shop in a tent and he fitted every single kid in that community with life-changing things. They can walk, they can feed themselves now. And DeAndre, I just want to say that when I left my house this morning, my wife asked me, "What's your favorite part of going to these meetings?" And I said, "Well, public comment." And she had said, "Well, what if no one shows up?" And I said, "Well, I can always rely on DeAndre to be there." So I appreciate that, but that, you know, remark is that, you know, we've got to look at different ways of doing it. And your comment about 3D printer brought up an idea and a speaker that I heard. And I think Al had heard the same speaker. I've got a second copy of the book. I'll bring it next time. It's a real easy read. It's called Not Impossible. Do what you can to do what can't be done. And I'd love to give that to you and I appreciate your out-of-the-box thinking and we need more of that in this county to solve some of the problems that we're facing because it has been pointed out, what we've been doing isn't working. It's time for something new. So, thank you, DeAndre.
Appreciate that.
All right, Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to remind the public that myself, along with all of the commissioners up here, took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Michigan. Last year, of the over 4 million votes that were cast, 56% of those votes were cast in favor of reproductive rights in this state and I personally plan on upholding that oath to that constitution. Moreover, I personally am also a substitute teacher in the local public schools. I have been at Lee Midowan High School, Godfrey Elementary, and the Early Childhood Center for Godfrey Public Schools in the last two weeks. The only kids that I see wearing masks in schools are individual kids who may be sick or who have a reason to believe they are sick and I assume cannot stay at home by themselves. I think it's important to remind ourselves where we were during this pandemic and just how much we didn't know. I think it's a fair point that since we have ended the pandemic, there has been a lot of studies that have come out on the effectiveness or non-effectiveness of some of the policies that were implemented during the pandemic. But I think it's more important to say and to focus on where do we go from here? I am personally very happy that we're focused on health. I think we should redirect that energy to say, "Where do we go from here?" There have been studies conducted over the last couple of decades that show that a universal healthcare program not only would cut costs, but would also be much more effective. And I know that those are two areas that this board is very passionate about, is being effective and lowering costs, not only for a system, but also for individuals. And so I would like to suggest that if we're focused on health, that would be a much better use of our energy and time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bujack?
Thank you, Chair Steck. I'm not afraid to vote no. I didn't come to this commission to rubber stamp resolutions. And I promise you that every time I do vote no, I will give you some reasoning as to why I am voting no. Today, my no vote on both issues that I voted no were a vote of no confidence in Adam London, our health director. Our Health Department today is still advocating the vaccination COVID-19 of our children. For any parent that is out there that is listening to this meeting, please, please reconsider your thoughts on the vaccination of your children. Giving your child an mRNA vaccine is an experimentation with your child. The long-term effects, unknown. So my vote of no today... So my vote of no today is because we continue to advocate vaccination when we know better. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Something on a little bit of a lighter note. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Lowell High School wrestling team for winning the Division II state title last weekend. And what's remarkable about it, it's their 10th year in a row of winning the state championship. And what a remarkable program that the coach, RJ Boudreaux, has built there. We have our clerk, Lisa Pastumas Lyons, and her family has been very involved in the program. Stephanie Boone, who's in the audience, who spoke today, her family's been very involved with the wrestling program as well. And they're building great young men and women in my alma mater and the community that I'm proud to represent. So go Lowell Red Arrows.
All right. I was going to say that's only because there's a Granville team behind them pushing them, but, okay. Anyone else? Yes. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to express my appreciation to Mr. Loth for his kind comments, and to my three sons who have attended this morning for their relatively good behavior. I did try to make sure they knew multiple times that since we had a snow day at our last meeting, this one would probably be longer than normal, and they were all still very interested to come. So I hope they don't regret that decision. And then just want to, quick comment on the affordable housing. I, I am interested to get, so a number of people noted, like, we don't have direct authority over zoning and some of those issues. But one of the, like, cost aspects that we do have some authority over is the property tax impact. And I, I know with inflationary pressures, especially in real estate, that, that's becoming, you know, a problem, especially for our senior citizens and fixed incomes and others on fixed incomes, where even just this year, you know, property tax bill is adding $40 or $50 a month to people's costs. So, so Administrator Vanderburgh, I'll, I'll reach out and try to get, you know, some spreadsheets, I can slice and dice to kind of understand that a little bit better, so that we can look at what impact that has on the overall housing challenges that we have. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I pause whether or not I should speak, but I, I do feel it's important to, to give a vote of, and a voice of support for our Health Department and Dr. Adam London. You know, the fact of the matter is, it's been almost two years since the mask order was put in place and then lifted when vaccinations were made available to children above five. And, you know, as we saw, while certainly there is a continued research on the effectiveness of different COVID tools, at the time, it remained one of the more effective tools in our toolbox, because there weren't vaccines, because there weren't antiviral, because we were still learning about the virus. It was still the most prudent decision to make at the time. And we saw that in the fall of 2021, those districts that didn't have mask requirements had a 62% increase in COVID infection rates versus those that did. And, you know, I, for one, continue to appreciate Dr. London and the Health Department for continuing to focus on how we reduce the harm to, to human health, to support our public health system, and to focus on the tools that work. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, yes, our, our Health Department supports and promotes the effectiveness of vaccines that even if they are, even if mRNA vaccines are newer, they have been researched for decades, they are based on, decades of medical research and development. I was personally, as a parent, proud to have gotten my child vaccinated with our Health Department. And the fact of the matter is, I just am, I'm growing continually frustrated that we have decided to relitigate this matter time and time and again, when in fact, I think we should be realizing, focusing more on how our Health Department can continue its efforts to reduce or to improve public health. And, you know, I just want to, again, express my gratitude to Dr. London for his work, and thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Commissioner Baker.
I also want to voice my appreciation for Adam London and the Health Department. At the most recent Legislative Committee, we celebrated the work of the IT during COVID and the IT department, and they were communicating the work of the Health Department. So I was a school board member, and when that decision was made in the fall of 21, we had spent the previous year mostly closed and trying to figure out how we knew for sure the learning loss was, was affected by the fact that children weren't being able to go to school. And we were trying to make a decision based on what was going to allow the schools to, to be open, to make sure that the children, their teachers, their families, the teachers' families would be safe. Every decision that we made as a school board that year, and I'd been on the school board for, for 12 years before that, every decision that we made that year felt like a life and death decision. And every time we made a decision, we had people who were pro and against every decision that we made. In August of 21, we had decided previously to allow masks to be something that happened at a parental choice level, but the COVID rates were rising. Children's parents were coming to us. We were not able to vaccinate children yet. Parents were calling me. We had parents coming to the school board, asking us to, to not have masks. We had parents coming to the school board to ask us to have masks. But I got calls personally about mothers who were concerned that their children's health would be in deep jeopardy if they went to, to school without it, because they could not, because their children were immunocompromised and cannot be vaccinated at that time. I searched every possible area of, of information to find the right decision, and, and I'm not qualified to make that decision. Many people across the country, the federal government, were saying that we, we should do this to make it safer. And so we did that. This is a decision that was made under the best conditions, and, you know, I'm frankly appalled that we're, we're taking this decision to malign someone who has done good work. So, and, and done good, and the Health Department, I believe, saved lives. And, you know, we should, we should move on, but we shouldn't be trying to, we should at least, if we're going to litigate the work of Adam London, then we should, we should look at the whole record and how many lives were also saved.
All right. Anyone else on miscellaneous? I see none. All right. And I have no more. I'll not extend this any longer. But I will call on Commissioner Dubour for one last non-roll call motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support it. All those in favor say yes, we are adjourned.